Jones, roll call please.
President Stewart.
Here.
Vice President Yanazi.
Here.
Ms. Reeves.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Sigda.
Here.
Mayor Reeves.
Here.
Mr. Charlie, if you'll lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord God, we thank you again for a chance to come together as a community. We thank you for this day, but we ask your blessing on everyone gathered here tonight, and especially on those who lead us in our community. We ask for spirit of justice, fairness, and wisdom to be upon us this evening. Be on our hearts and our minds and our tongues as our leaders discuss, deliberate, and decide. Let everything be for the betterment of this community and to your glory. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel did meet this evening at six o'clock in executive session, during executive session. We had the opportunity to get updated by some solicitors on some litigation issues, as well as have a discussion about the stamping of the EMDs and the escrow of the donation from the fire department. Upcoming meetings, this coming Wednesday, the 12th will be a special meeting to ratify the 2020 amended budget. It'll be at six o'clock here in Borough Hall. And then our regular workshop meeting is the first Monday in March, which will be March 2nd, followed by our regular meeting of counsel on March 9th. Both meetings would be at seven o'clock. Two special action items this evening, and Mr. Solicitor, if I get off track when it comes to the tax collector, I would certainly appreciate your assistance, just to make sure. Counsel, as you are aware, this board took action at a previous meeting to declare the office of the taxpayer to be vacant for failure to qualify for the office. Basically, it was a paperwork issue. The tax collector has since filed an injunction in the Court of Common Pleas saying that he was duly elected to the position and that his paperwork is in order. Unfortunately, he was, fell ill at the beginning of the year. So what we're faced with, with the board, is two decisions. We've declared the office to be vacant.
No, that was legal.
Mr. Solicitor.
Sure. So it was legal, Ms. Reeves, in that Section 901A talks about vacancies in elected offices, including the tax collector, and one of the ways is the residency affidavit that has to be filed under Section 801. Failure to do that means you fail to qualify, and that's what happened. Even in Mr. Corcoran's injunction papers, he acknowledges he didn't file that until the day after the council declared the vacant. So it certainly was a legal action, but I think if Mr. Stewart's going to go over the options to...
So Borough Council was to take action to appoint the position. Basically, what we would be doing is appointing the position for a two-year period of time because the election laws would require the tax collector to run again during the next municipal election, which would be two years. If council was to take that action this evening, what I can more or less guarantee is this tomorrow morning, the tax collector will go to the court system and say, let's move forward with the injunction, and it would subject the board to litigation. The other action that this board can take this evening is to rescind our action of declaring the position to be vacated. And upon rescinding that action, at that point in time, the tax collector has met all of the requirements to take the office, and at that point in time, Mr. Corcoran would be the tax collector as voted upon by the resident.
That's correct, Mr. Stewart.
Are we empowered to, if you said that he didn't qualify under the election law, the position was vacated at that time, right?
It was, but you're certainly empowered to rescind that declaration of vacancy, and he filed the paperwork at this point, so it's certainly appropriate use of your power if you choose to exercise it.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If the taxes come through his house, if he has to get, I think, from the police to get a sticker on his car, which is registration and his license, if mail comes to the house, I don't think the post office would send fraudulent checks and stuff to his house. Isn't that residency too?
He's a voter.
I certainly understand, I certainly understand all those points. The Borough Code's pretty clear under 801A that you have to file this affidavit of residency.
So you have to have that piece of paper.
You do, and in fact, 901A lists that as specifically one of the ways an office can be vacant. It says, you know, if you fail to provide the affidavit required under Section 801, which is the one that talks about the affidavit, you do need that.
Could you, could you just read that statute, the end of it? What does it say about the consequences of not filing the paperwork?
It's real long here, you know.
Yeah, well, I mean, it has to.
It's not real long.
Oh, come on, let's just...
There is a decent amount. It just says, you know, if a vacancy occurs under the tax collector, Biden has one of many things, one of them were failure to provide the affidavit required under Section 801, then counsel shall fill the vacancy within 30 days.
That's fulfilling the vacancy, but what about creating the vacancy?
So...
Why not call?
It talks about the, if, like, this position requires a bond, if an individual elected to the office fails to give any bond required or to provide the affidavit required under Section 801, the counsel, before making the appointment, shall declare the office vacant. So that's where you declare it vacant. Which you did, and it was proper, but I agree with Mr. Stewart that, given that the tax collector has now filed his affidavit of residency, he was previously bonded, he had filed his oath, he took the oath of office late, but he is still taking it, so at this point, he is qualified for the office. So if you were to do a simple motion to rescind that vacancy, it would restore him to his position. And then actually, we do have a hearing in front of Judge Dozor tomorrow at 3:00, which hopefully we'll be able to report that we've done that, and that was all.
And that would essentially resolve the litigation matter.
I'll make a motion then to rescind that vacancy.
Well, you called for it.
Counsel, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to rescind the motion to create the vacancy in the tax collector's position.
Make a motion to rescind the vacancy, to create the tax collector.
I have a motion on the table by Counselor Reeves, I've got a second that I'll recognize by Counselwoman Gross. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments to the solicitor before I take action?
Could this decision, if we go ahead with this, also be challenged in courts?
I mean, as a lawyer, I like to say you could sue everybody about anything, but I don't, I'm not sure who would challenge it.
As a member of election law.
Look, could somebody file a suit, I guess, but I can tell you that based on my conversation with at least this particular judge, my sense is that a court would not entertain it to any great length. I mean, I think, once you're restored into the office, I think a court, especially given he's filed the paperwork, would be reluctant to entertain with any seriousness a challenge to this.
Well, since Mr. Corcoran is here, I'd just like to ask Mr. Corcoran, the auditors are still looking for the 2018 tax records. Did you turn those in, or?
You gotta put them back in the office first.
I can answer that question. That's the answer to your question. Once I'm, once I'm put back in office, I will make sure they have everything.
Because that's holding up the audit.
Counsel, prior to the call of action, is there anybody that's from the public that has any questions about the action we're getting ready to take?
Yes.
I just...
Right behind you.
Okay, can you look at Section 903, please? 903 states, it's 10 days unless the guy's sick.
He was sick.
In which time, there is no timeline. So, okay, so Section 903, that refers after that point to Section 901. All right, so basically, this guy was sick. I don't know this guy, right, but you all said you're saying 10 days, so I had to find out myself. 903 says 10 days, unless the person is sick. Now, apparently, this guy was sick. All right? Then after that, there is no timeline listed. Any judge will sit there and go with the no timeline listed after.
No, I, for a start, I think it's...
Well, you know, so, I mean, come on, counsel.
I know.
The guy's sick.
Right.
And you got something in there that says...
I believe the council's getting ready to take action. I believe our action is going to satisfy concerns.
Thank you.
No, that was...
That was your question?
Yeah, I will say one thing, the school district's not too happy with this whole thing because deposits aren't getting paid, so the school district and the borough are both losing money. Yep, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Yep.
Well, you understand that the tax collector is responsible for fulfilling the jobs from 2018 to 2019, even if he's out of office. Do you understand that?
Are you going to do a job even I can't beat for?
No, it's not that. I don't, technically, legally, and I could be wrong, Mr. Muza, if he's not declared tax collector, he has no business being in the office, correct?
For the purposes of audits, I mean, this happens often, the audit continues after somebody's out of office, and you would still have to help comply with that audit, but that's different than making deposits for the school.
Exactly, right.
So I have a motion that's on the table, I have that section that I believe that we've had an opportunity to ask questions, make comments, address any of the concerns of those in attendance this evening, so at this time, I'll call for action. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Unbelievable, unbelievable. The Borough, according to Glenn, stop.
Just to, just to make sure that we're clear on the vote, the motion passes five to one, with Mr. Wilson being the note.
You have shut the...
I'm sorry, six to one, with Mr. Wilson being the note.
You said yes, right?
Yes. I said it loud.
And just to be clear, I mean, if, if, Section 903 refers to council members, not the other office.
So it's six to one where you're saying the 10 days.
No, there's no 10 days for the issue of the affidavit of the residency.
So what section declares that he has 10 days?
So I don't think there's any section that declares 10 days.
I think that any...
Exactly.
I think any other discussion regarding the tax collector from this point forward is...
Just pardon my point.
And this is for his four-year term.
Correct, because you've rescinded it, now it's like that didn't happen, so he's now service four-year term, and we'll go see the court tomorrow.
Thank you. Business as usual.
Chief, prior to the call of action, just wanted to confirm with you that the candidate for the part-time police officer's position has been subjected both to medical and psychological testing and has been declared fit for duty?
Yes, fit for duty, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. So counsel, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to appoint David Ford to the position of part-time patrol officer with the Borough of Eddie Stone Police Department.
Make a motion to appoint David Ford to the position of part-time patrol officer of the Borough of Eddie Stone.
I have a motion that I'll recognize from Mr. Sprague, seconded by Counselor Sigda. Is there any questions of counsel prior to the call for action? Is there any calls from the public prior to the call for action? Not hearing any? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mayor, would you do the honors of swearing in our newest officer?
Who wants to hold the Bible? Who wants to hold the Bible?
Yeah, boys, yeah, you want to come up here?
Guys, want to go? I, David Ford.
I, David Ford. Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
I will support, obey, defend, without support, obey, defend.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the ordinance of the Borough of Eddie Stone.
And the ordinance of the Borough of Eddie Stone.
And to carry out the duties and responsibilities.
And to carry out the duties and responsibilities.
Of a police officer.
Of a police officer.
With fidelity and to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
With fidelity and to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Hey, Karen?
Congratulations.
What's that?
The group pictures, family?
You want a group picture? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Don't you even scan it, Frank. That's the thing, or you should... No, your part.
Sure. Mr. Ford, before, I don't know if I can grab one before he goes down the steps.
I got Mr. Ford.
Oh, I'll give you a fourth, you know, I didn't know what you were...
Oh, okay, if you have one, I mean, I can...
What, do you use HDMI or do you use just the computer, screen to screen? Screen to screen? Okay, I'll get that.
Mr. O'Meara, if you'd be so kind, I noticed that there was, I think you were the only one that got a shot of him being sporting with the Bible. You could email that one shot to Ms. Jones, and if, Ms. Jones, if you could forward that along to Mr. Ford and his family, would be greatly appreciated. One item that did not make the agenda for our presentation, I understand that the fire company would like to address counsel and the public on a presentation of some AEDs to be donated.
So, on behalf of the Eddie Stone Fire Company, we had some repurposing of some equipment that are still in good shape. We realized that there's no AED that I was aware of that we asked around for Lighthouse Hall and also the Borough building. So we have two AEDs to present to Borough Council to be placed wherever you guys seem fit at, at the Borough and at Lighthouse Hall. They're all tested, all new batteries, all new pads, so you guys are set up for a good couple of years.
Good job. Want to cry out with somebody?
No. We also are, got some smoke detectors, so we did, the fire chief last week went around where the fire, the two fires were, on 11th and Ashland, distributed some smoke detectors, but we also have some spare, so if you guys need some, please just, when you guys are coming out.
How many do you have left?
Marion. Seven. Actually, eight.
Do we have more of the fires? No, that's all we have. We gave about, I think, 20 or 30 out over the...
Yeah, Marion needs to cheer her up.
Not a problem. All right? And then, that's about it, and we'll, we'll be putting out some information about some free CPR classes for the community, we'll have it down at Lighthouse Hall since I left it out, and, like I said, it's free of charge.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we're joined by Ms. Donna Stillwell, who is employed at Brinker Simpson and Company, and we invited Donna out this evening to address counsel and the public regarding the proposed examination of the Borough accounting procedures, policies, and our internal controls. Mike, you might have a plug and play, maybe.
Yeah, I don't think it's looking good.
No, it don't look good. I think this, you've got an HDMI.
All I have is a C cord.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I have some extra copies, I'll just save mine here and kind of talk, really a brief presentation. If anybody would like any copies to pass around, I have extra copies I hand out. So basically, my name is Donna Stillwell, and I'm a partner at Brinker Simpson and Company, we're a CPA firm in Springfield. I'm a Ridley Township resident, and I was engaged by the township to just come in and just do a review and assess the policy procedures and internal controls, just to make sure everything's in order. I think the audits being behind raised a little concern when counsel came in, so they asked me to come in and do this engagement. So basically, the goals are to assess the current policies and processes, and to assist the Borough with documentation of best practices designed to address any weaknesses of internal controls and Borough policies, and to really work with the audit firm, Mingus and Gata, Mingus Gatawski and Company, to go through their audit findings over the last couple of years and try and make improvements to the internal controls. The implementation will be designed really to help the Borough become more efficient and to produce accurate and timely financial reports and get the audits done on time, really is the end goal. So a little bit about Brinker Simpson and Company, we've been in business for 30 years. In September, we started, we celebrated our 30th anniversary. It was formed by managing partner Bob Simpson, and our goal really is to form strong relationships with our clients, help them overcome any challenges, and perform necessary actions to help become successful. We were qualified for this engagement because we have strong relevance, the resources that we have regarding our team of employees that we have. We have over 40 employees, CPAs, over 25 CPAs. My, my team is the outsourced accounting team and the fraud and forensic team, so I oversee the outsourced accounting and any fraud and forensic projects that come into our firm. I have a staff of seven employees, one who works closely with me on the fraud and forensic side, is also a certified fraud examiner, as am I. He also has a master's from University of Delaware in economics and finance. My background, I've been a CPA for about seven years now, eight years, but I've been in the accounting field for over 30 years, and if anybody remembers the Franklin Mint, which if anybody's driven down Route 1 lately, it is leveled. I worked there for 16 years in the corporate finance department, and also worked for another CPA firm in media. So my background has always been around controllership and operational efficiency. So we're committed to this project and to quality and timely service, and we'll do whatever we can to get the job done. And we're really honored to really have the opportunity to be here today. So as I said, I'm going to leave the engagement, along with my team, and Andrew, who's also a financial analyst and certified fraud examiner, will help me. So basically, our approach is this, we've already discussed, had some discussions with Borough representatives to try and understand what, what is our mutual goal here, and then, so that we're all on the same page as to the service that we're going to provide. We want to develop documents, a repository of documents and information and relevant data, so that we can perform this, this engagement. And then to gain understanding of all the people involved in the process of how things are done at the Borough, that's relative to the scope of this engagement and confirm the expectations. So we've already had conversations with Mingus Gatawski, and I think we have a good working relationship starting off, so I feel very confident about that. I'm sorry. So basically, what we're going to do is we're going to review the documentation provided and assess policies and procedures. The roadblock that we've been coming into is that we don't really have any written policies and procedures to review, and we haven't really received many of the documents that we need from the controller, so we're hoping in the next couple weeks to be able, couple days, to be able to get this information. We will conduct various procedures to assess the effectiveness of the current structure of the internal controls, identify weaknesses, and report them to the council. And then basically, at the end of this engagement, we are going to give a report to counsel that identifies weaknesses and recommends processes and improvements to the internal controls and the flow of information throughout the Borough. And really, that's, that's the objective, to really improve, make sure we have efficient internal, you have efficient internal controls here in place, and policies and procedures that are written, established, and everybody can follow them. I, I know everybody's read about what happened out in Kennet Square, we're not saying that there's ever any fraud anywhere, but you always want to have policies in place to protect against that, right? As in any, any operation that you do, whether you're a mom and pop shop, you're a big corporation, there always needs to be internal controls to eliminate or mitigate the risk of anything happening. So that's really our engagement, is to put some documents together and, and hopefully improve the efficiency of the Borough's operations, and to work with, with Dawn and counsel, so it's nice to be here. If anybody has any questions, anyone to ask me, I just started on the 3rd, so I don't know what I can do.
First of all, is this an audit?
It is not an audit, it's an assessment of, of internal controls.
Is that what Mingus does for us?
No, they, they perform an audit. They're auditing this financial information, I'm coming in and looking at it more of a deep dive to help you with your policies and procedures, and to work through some of the information that was distributed in the SaaS letters, to help improve that, so you don't get those, and really to try and help you get the audits done on time, because there seems to be an issue with the documentation that's getting received by Mingus to get theirs done on time.
These are the SaaS letters, these are the reports that are put out by John Hannah, who is the auditor who works for Mingus Gatawski, and these are the things that we have not been given access to over the past few years. Now, I know that John Hannah has spoken with Ms. Stillwell, and one thing that's consistent through all of these are missing records and also a lack of separation between different people handling money and so forth, who makes deposits, and so on and so forth. And every single year, he makes the same recommendations from the auditor, and every single year, nothing happens with him. Now, that was my concern. My other concern is that there's, I think there's a security problem here, because the Borough has, all of the Borough's records are on a QuickBooks program that was a 2014 version that's on a computer in the basement. No one on counsel, the Borough manager, no one has the password for those accounts except for Mark and Joe Pizenti. They also have remote access to the computers, so that they can work on those files and operate the computer from another location. And I, we have asked, I know John Hannah has asked repeatedly for access to the QuickBooks files, I know Ms. Stillwell has asked for access to the QuickBooks files, I know Dawn Jones has been in the middle of some of those emails and has requested of Joe Pizenti that he cooperate, present some of those files, so that Ms. Stillwell can begin her work, and so far, we've gotten nothing. So, you know, I would like to, I would like to, I would like to, I would like to make the recommendation that this evening, the password to the Borough's QuickBooks files be given to Dawn Jones, our Borough manager, and to Ed McChesky, the police chief, so that the Borough has access to those files. Why don't you give it to the police?
No, 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 no.
Because he would...
Police chief does not get no access to that computer.
I'm just saying that the police chief is trustworthy first.
First of all, Dawn is, Dawn bonded.
His position is.
Are you bonded, Dawn?
I have the paperwork sitting in the office, Lee, and I'm just waiting.
Okay, so Dawn's not even bonded. So until Dawn gets bonded, nothing's going to be done.
What do you mean, nothing's going to be done?
Mark, you got any comments about the concerns Mr. Wilson has about the QuickBooks?
Yeah, I mean, we're, I mean, we're not a, we're a professional service, so we have fiduciary responsibility to the borough. And the way the environment is here right now, I mean, it kind of, somebody's trying to pin something on us. So we really don't want anybody messing with the QuickBooks. John Hanna has had access to QuickBooks.
No, he has not.
And he has, he has been, he has Tina.
I spoke to John Hanna this afternoon, emails.
You can ask Tina. John used to go on to make journal entries, but he used to screw up the QuickBooks. Tina has access to QuickBooks. So we're not the only ones with access to QuickBooks, so.
Then why won't you give us a backup of the files?
So Joe's concern is that somebody, just giving out would be irresponsible for us. Because why, where's the responsibility going to fall back if something happens to QuickBooks, fall back or not?
So you're saying that our auditor is going to mess up the files? The CPA that we hire and this, and this other CPA here aren't capable of examining the work, of a backup. What they ask for is a backup copy with the password. They don't actually want to access the files that are on the computer. Right now, Steve, you know, our IT person does a backup of the QuickBooks files. But if he restores them after some kind of a crash, we still won't be able to access any of our records because we don't have that password.
Steve, did you say Tina had it?
Yeah.
Okay, Tina had it.
So, and then, you know, the responsibility.
The auditors, I'm telling you, the auditor is saying that you're not giving him QuickBooks and he's been asking it for, for years.
Well, the auditor says a lot of stuff about people being on their backs. It's a common ground.
He's not talking, he's.
But the environment's been a little nasty, so we really, the trust factor right now is just.
I think you're very defensive. If you've got nothing to hide.
I got nothing to hide. If you go back and play your tape away a couple meetings, you've been making some accusations.
I am, I am, I am not accusing anybody of stealing money. I am accusing people of not getting the work done properly.
Actually, that's a lie, because you have video tapes. You tell people that they had kickbacks coming, including John Lyman.
Mr. Wilson, who's talking about kickbacks?
You.
Who?
You, you, you haven't? You never said that John Lyman was getting kickbacks?
No, I never said.
You never said that stuff was funky, people were getting kickbacks on account for?
Where's the ta- where's the paper accusing me of stealing?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, well, show me where I said that.
We will finish. We want to finish eighteen and nineteen, like we've discussed.
Mr. Wilson, I think there's a process that's been put in place. The process is that the auditors have to look at the.
You're just saying that you don't have access. That's the only problem.
I don't need access.
So he could, he could put everything on Facebook.
But I'll tell you what, these are going out.
You better check with the lawyer, make sure.
I did check with the lawyer already. The audit letters are public doc, financial documents.
The management letters, correct?
The audit letters that, that I've seen are audit reports, which are public documents. So the audit reports under the Right to Know Act are financial records, which are available to the public. They talked about a personnel issue or something that should be redacted, but I saw that.
And when the two thousand sixteen audit was done, and you made everybody on council sign an affidavit saying that they wouldn't divulge the contents of those things to the public.
Because it was a manager's letter, yes.
Well, you listen, you know, if you're not going to listen to your own attorney.
I'm not listening to you. You don't know Jack.
What did, what did the attorney just tell you? He told you that they are public documents.
Not what Mr. Stewart sent you, was not a public document that you post, that you posted on Facebook, Bill.
I will, I will disagree that the attorney has made a decision that the document I sent you is a public document.
I report the public document.
Why did it say all over it? Why did it say all over it?
Karen, let me say.
No, let me say something to you, Greg.
You are not a lawyer.
Neither are you.
I'm listening to the lawyer.
Well, you know everything.
Because I talk to the lawyer. You know, why?
Yeah, what did you get the bill?
Why they, we're not being charged anything more for me asking questions of the lawyer because they have a set price. Now, and it's the same price it was being charged.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson, I'm losing money. You're losing money.
They are losing money.
Because either paying the neck, you're losing money.
Rutledge only pays thirty-eight hundred a year.
Yeah, right.
For what?
We're paying sixty thousand. For their attorney. Theresa, that's actually worth four.
Yeah, I think they have some problems. Mr. Pizenti, moving forward, you know.
Why don't you, why don't you move there? You can fix their problem.
Where, where, where are we at in the audit process for getting the seventeen, the eighteen, or the eighteen and the nineteen audit completed?
You put, you put a request out for the documents. We'll have the majority of them tomorrow. Now that Dan's back, Dan will get the tax collector stuff he needs. So eighteen will wrap up and then we'll go right into nineteen. So like I've said, I think last Monday, I'm assuming the fieldwork, with the fieldwork, I'm confident enough to say the fieldwork will be done by the end of this month. And then they'll finish up their DCED reports and they'll, and they're all just like they usually do.
Ms. Stillwell, if you had an opportunity to look at the, some of the documents that you are looking for, you know, are they in the hands of the auditor right now? Or are they something that's separate from the audit process that's currently being? You know, what, what I'm trying to do is, is to fit two people into a very confined space at the same time. You know, from a, from my perspective as being chair of the board, you know, I don't want to interrupt the audit process because we were behind on the audits and I think it's important for the board to make sure that we're up to date with our filings for the DCED. You know, however, I do see the importance of the operation that you have, which is to put policies, procedures, and controls in and, and correcting the findings that come from the auditors. Is that, you know, Mr. Wilson is correct that year after year after year after year after year, the same findings show up in the, what you call SaaS letter? I'm sorry, I've never heard that term before, but the SaaS letter, which is the auditor's finding. So, so what, you know, what information can, can, can we facilitate the Pacentis to give you now?
Before we put Ms. Stillwell on the, on the, uh, I just want to say that I have an email from the, our auditor, John Hanna, stating that if we had, if he had the QuickBooks, it would speed up the audit process and that there's nothing that Ms. Stillwell is doing that's going to interfere with either the two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen audit processes. So this, what you're hearing about her interfering with the audits and slowing down the process is absolutely not true according to the auditor himself.
So I mean, basically, what I would like to do is spend time with the Pacentis and just review what their policies and procedures are. I sat down with Mike when I was here on the third and just asked if there were any written policies and procedures. And at that time, I think he said there were no known written policies and procedures. So really just sit down with them and see what their process is. And then I can work with Drew and John Hanna and to see what they have as far as audit documents. I had originally sent out an email with a list of documents that I needed or requested. To have a backup of the QuickBooks file would be really nice to have. When you give an accountant a backup of the QuickBooks file, they really can't mess it up because we're not working with the original file. We're working with a copy of it and it would be, I would be working on it in my office, not on the server of Edestim. So I wouldn't really be affecting any of the work that the Pacentis are doing. I really would like to work with them and try and get these policies and procedures documented so we're all moving in the right direction. So you would be able to.
And no disrespect, not to cut you off, but we did say, prior to meeting you, Bill Stewart, Karen, we, Stan, and Beth told us not to give you, look, not to proceed any information to you until the audit is done. That's what we're like.
You were told that.
I was told that.
But, but counsel had voted to. But counsel had voted to initiate this process. This is what we did.
Dan told me that, Beth.
Well, we, we have videotaped these things.
On the sixth of January.
She was coming in there.
On the sixth of January.
You have refused to give them any records.
No, it was a quick thing. Once again, you're accusing me of non-information. This was.
January thirtieth, it was supposed to be.
Bill said don't give any information until the audit's done.
Who's Bill? Bill who?
Your, your president.
Why would Bill tell you not, not? Why would you do that?
Because we want to get the audits done.
We already know that the audits aren't going to be affected by this, Bill, so why would you, why would you tell them not to provide?
Bill, we can't do it anyway until we get the budget.
He did that just to push you off.
I don't know. I think we're going to have to get John Hanna in here. Now, John's in a difficult situation because he also works with the Pacentis in another town.
Which town?
Oprah.
No, he doesn't.
He doesn't?
That's your file. Nice try, but no.
Oh, well, I guess he's misinformed then. He's working, he's working in another town.
No, Mingus is not in another town. It's nice try. I'll name right, right off every order in every town. You're wrong.
Don't let John make a mistake, because that's what he told me.
Bill said, "Well."
I did. I recorded something that was not true.
You know, Mr. Wilson, we're in a, we're in a little seesaw battle here in the fact that I think everybody on council agrees that we need to make sure that we're following policies and procedures. I think everybody on council agrees that the audit findings from years past need to be corrected. However, we, we need to foster some type of working relationship with the Pacentis. And instead of, you know, putting those folks that have been doing our financial controls for the last eight years on their heels, we, we, we need to foster some type of relationship to where we're not looking for something.
We are asking to see our own.
We're looking to move forward. We are asking to see our own financial records. That's all we're asking for. Now, there is a Finance and Audit Committee. I got involved in this because one of my responsibilities is administration and policy. And I consider not having any policies for how checks are written, how, how the accounting's done. No written policies whatsoever in the borough is a bad thing. And I think that we need to.
You even made a Facebook posting saying that people were signing off on requisitions. How are you supposed to have a checks and balances? If you don't have, if you don't sign off on requisitions for your committee chairs. Committee chairs are responsible for signing requisitions for expenditures.
For spending money?
For, for expenditures needing.
For approving bills that came in and, and Ja- July and were never paid until January?
So for somebody who wants transparency, you don't want, you don't want to be able to see that, oh, your highway department needed tires. Okay, so I get the requisition I have to sign so the bill can be paid.
Can we, can we, can I, I wanted to ask, we have the Chair of the Finance and Audit Committee sitting here. We have Rob Yonizy, who is also on the Finance Committee here.
And we got you.
Can I hear from you two what you think of this situation? Take a stand?
Sure.
Should we, should we proceed with the, the evaluation or not?
What evaluation?
The evaluation that we voted on in council, the evaluation that we ran on.
Would you like to answer or would you like to filibuster?
No, he likes to.
I'm saying. Karen, who interrupted you.
You interrupt everybody.
We voted as a council on January sixth to engage Brinker Simpson in an audit. What we did not vote, or no, I'm sorry, a review of policies and procedures.
Don't say on it.
Sorry. What we did not vote on was the start date. The start date was agreed upon between you and Ms. Stillwell based on what made sense at the time. And nobody.
Nope, nope.
That was my.
Let, let, let him finish.
Give it aside if you can.
Let him finish. Let him finish. Let him finish.
It's not accurate.
You're not accurate. Go ahead, Chris.
At the time, it made sense. There was no reason not to have her start at that point. Subsequent to that, we found out that the two thousand nineteen audit was going to be completed this month. And the only thing that would interfere with us being ahead of schedule for the first time since the Pacentis have been here would be if we interrupted that process in order to have the policy review done, which is not on a schedule. That can be done next month and it won't affect anything. So yes, in my opinion, I think it would be foolish to stop the audit process and move forwards with that only to go back to the audits probably late and end up late again when that was ultimately the, the goal of all of this was to start getting our audits done on time. If we can do both of them simultaneously without there being any interference, I don't see a problem with that. But when I'm, I'm hearing conflicting news about that.
I would ask you, as, as the Chair of that, the Audit Committee, have you ever spoken to our borough auditor?
No, I have.
Have you ever asked him any questions about what's going on?
I was waiting to hear his findings before I started asking questions.
His findings were sealed, apparently. And I sent you those findings the other night.
Yes, you did.
And so you've had a chance to read through those. That's one question. The other question.
Let me ask you a question.
The other question is Dawn. How was, how was the decision made for when Donna Stillwell would come in? Who made that decision?
You had, you had emailed me. We discussed it. I mean, Chris, that'll be a.
You two, you two decided those dates and you informed me when those dates were going to be.
Correct.
Correct. I didn't pull her in that day.
Mr. Wilson, if it's Mr., if it's Mr. Sprague's committee, why isn't Mr. Sprague handling this? So why do you got your nose in it?
Because I'm part of the Administration of Policy Committee and it's an administrative matter. It's much or more than it is a finance. Because we're not accusing them, we're not accusing anybody of stealing money or misspending it. We're just saying.
You just did a few minutes ago.
On video. On video.
Did not. Well, I said, what, what, what I'm saying is that we don't have policies and procedures for how to do it, okay?
Ms. Stillwell, I'm sorry. I apologize to you for having to go through all this crap.
That's okay. I mean, I just have a job to do and willing to work with the Pacentis and Hanna and now Mingus and Gatawski to get it done. Really, my job is to assess the policies and procedures and that's all I really want to do, so.
Listen, if she says that she only wants a copy, okay, then that, they can run simultaneously. It doesn't have to be that she has to stop and wait while it's done, because she's only got a copy. She's looking at procedures. She's not looking at the actual numbers, okay? And the other part of this is, is that the borough should have access to their records. Not necessarily everybody, but if we're just finding out that Tina has it now, we'd have to say, why didn't we know that? And somebody, no offense to Tina Torres, somebody in a higher position should have access. Dawn should probably have access to that computer.
I don't think that should require Mr. Coulter.
Uh, just a quick question. Um, Mr. Wilson said that this, this lady's process won't affect the, the, um, the audit, correct? Now, how, how is that possible when you have to sit down with people that are doing the audits and we're on a tight schedule here? How are you sitting down, them providing all this information, talking to you about different procedures? How is that not holding their product, process to finish? Can I finish, please?
I thought you were finished, sorry.
Well, I finished when I'm done talking. So, and, and I mean, no disrespect, but how, how, how does that not slow these gentlemen's process down to get these audits done when they have to sit down and speak with you?
Well, they really only have to spend like an hour or two. I mean, we're in February of two thousand twenty, so I would assume that all the eighteen documentation should have been given to Mingus Gatawski and I would assume that.
He just said they just requested more information.
Right, that they probably should have had. And then, and then that the two thousand nineteen information should be completed. Me sitting with the Pacentis just to talk about policies and procedures for an hour or two really shouldn't affect anything with, with the audit. And me sitting with Mingus and Gatawski really shouldn't delay anything. So I'm fine with waiting either. It doesn't matter to me either, either way.
The only reason I bring it up is because we had a, a meeting, the last meeting, majority of council minus one person agreed that we should hold off your services until the following month so that these gentlemen have no impedience in, in order to get these audits done, which is what they ran on council to do, to get all the audits up to date, and they're trying to do that.
I mean, it's not up to me when, when I start.
And the majority of council agreed that we should start next week, and it minus one person.
Well, I, I'd like to ask anyone who was here in October, when the Pacentis told us that the two thousand eighteen audit was going to be done by the end of the month, when Karen told us that, where is it?
Can't go back, Mr. Wilson.
We're in February.
We can only move forward.
So I don't have confidence that these audits are going to be done in a timely manner. And the reason for that is that the folks are not in good order and they're not in the type of order. When you're being audited and you reconcile your, your books on a regular basis, you should just be able to hand those books to the, to the auditor and let the auditor audit. If you're going to resist any kind of auditing, if you're going to resist having anybody look at policies and procedures, it's bad.
He's not resisting. He was told by you guys not to block.
He refuses to handle our own records.
No, I never will. You're right. I think that things should be done according to proper accounting procedures and that things should be transparent and we shouldn't be years behind in our audits. That's what I think.
I did speak with John Hanna and. I did not think I would, I would impede the audit in any way if we were working together. It might actually help him in his audit, but, you know, I can schedule it whenever the borough is ready to do it. But a backup copy of QuickBooks will not, the auditor cannot mess up a backup of QuickBooks. We do audits. We get backups. We don't mess them up. We give them journal entries to do. So giving, giving the auditor. So giving the auditor, giving us a backup of the file isn't going to mess anything up, so. I mean, I'm fine to do it whenever.
Can I hear one more time why Pacente Consulting does not want to turn over the books to the auditors? QuickBooks program to the auditors?
When you say auditors, you're referring to Mingus and Gatawski?
I'm talking to Mingus and Gatawski. Mr. Hannah, Mingus and Gatawski has asked for the QuickBooks files year after year after year. He was given the QuickBooks files one year and he made criticisms. And from that point on, he's never gotten them again. The QuickBooks files are basically your books. It's all in that computer downstairs. And that computer downstairs can be wiped remotely. It's not secure. It's not secure. We should turn off remote access to that computer. If somebody wants to work on those records, they should come here and do the work.
What computer downstairs?
You're saying that Stevie G runs a backup.
They moved Mike's downstairs.
Stevie G runs a backup.
It's all in Mike's downstairs, right?
Stevie G backs up our files in two different methods, so they're very secure. And one of those is encrypted. But if we restore that file and we don't have the password, we still cannot access our books. That's the way it is. The only people that have access to those books, if you're saying that Tina Torres has access to the books, then maybe Tina Torres could make us a backup copy and it wouldn't interfere with what the Pacentes are doing.
Can you set up a meeting with Joe and yourself?
Why can't you just give us a backup?
So yourself, Joe, Mike and Donna can sit down and at least have.
We can form a committee to look into it and then have a study done.
Or we could just do it.
Or.
Can we set up a meeting? Can you throw me a couple dates out that Joe would be available?
This is now Donna, go over this?
Yeah. Does that mean you're going to give her the records?
Yeah, I reached out to the email on your website. Yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, I think Bill wants a date now, correct?
Well, I don't know. I don't know if he has availability to Joe's calendar. I'm assuming.
I do not.
Okay. Has Joe been responding to your emails, Donna?
Uh, so.
Has Joe been responding to your emails, Donna?
I only had sent him one email.
Let's just set up a meeting here and. Moving forward.
Really?
It should be up on midnight.
Council did have the opportunity to be briefed by Lieutenant Pretty and Chief Pacheski regarding some ordinances, what would be new to the borough and Chief, please correct me if I misspeak about the purpose of these ordinances, but in the very near future, you should see some advertisements coming out to add an ordinance in the borough to address disorderly conduct. The primary purpose of the ordinance would be that the borough would be able to place a fine or a penalty for violating the ordinance. Right now, I believe the only monies that are collected are collected in court fees.
That's correct.
And this would give the borough an opportunity to offset our police costs associated with a disorderly conduct situation. Another ordinance that you will see advertised here in the very near future is going to deal with drug paraphernalia. And basically, the purpose of the ordinance is to streamline the process that the police officers are required to take in order for them to, in the event that someone is stopped with some sort of drug paraphernalia, that, you know, the process for getting the necessary documentation and releasing the individual.
Like a ball?
Like what?
Like a ball.
No, that wasn't my ball. Something wrong here? The police department is also asking borough council to take consideration to charge an administrative fee for a process called PICS. Basically, if you are stopped, detained, and you have a firearm which is confiscated by the police department, the police department has a process that needs to be followed to verify and confirm that you are actually legally allowed to carry that firearm. So this would just be an administrative fee so that the police department, you know, to cover the cost of the officer making all of the background checks prior to returning the firearm that was confiscated during some type of search.
Shouldn't that gentleman do his presentation so he doesn't have to sit through the whole meeting? Or is that part of it?
Let's see. He's next on board.
All right, sorry. I just felt bad for the guy.
Mike was our solicitor for a long time.
I know.
He knows what Eddie Stone's all about. He didn't wear a tie tonight. He's.
And he's already seen enough crazy the rest of the year.
And then the last piece of business that the police department is requesting us to consider is to work with our code enforcement staff and have an ordinance or a requirement for what is called a BVA. A biodirectional amplifier installed in commercial facilities. What happens is a lot of times, and we've got two large warehouse spaces that are proposed to be constructed here in the borough within the next couple, you know, year or so. When an officer goes into a building or when a first responder goes into a larger building, what they find is they get a lot of radio interference and they're unable to communicate effectively on their two-way radio. So these BDAs or bi-directional amplifiers, if they are installed inside the building, will basically bounce those radio waves back to facilitate proper communication in an emergency situation. So those are four things to be on the lookout for council to be taking action here in the near future. And Mr. Madren, I certainly appreciate your patience.
Well, I appreciate you guys having me. I'm going to try to use this so that I can look at everybody instead of having to back to that. No, I'm good. Thank you. So I represent an entity called Different Ways Sober Living. And the Different Ways Sober Living is run by Eddie Stone residents who I think are still standing out in the hallway, although they may have had enough. Oh, now they're in the back. Gary and Nancy Seager who live over on Eddie Stone Avenue. And I just want to say, if you followed the papers about, you know, four or five years ago, you saw me fighting some of these sober living homes for another Providence. And I know a good operation when I see one. And that's why I was willing to take on this representation because these guys really do it right. And that's why we wanted to come to you and introduce the concept. A lot of people who are open sober living facilities are just going into towns without talking to the elected officials and the administration and we don't want to be that, you know? You know, these guys aren't slum lords who are trying to make a buck and put as many people in their house as they can and charge them weekly and that sort of thing. Both of them are in recovery, six years, in six plus years. So they've been through the process. They've been living this and their hearts are dedicated to this process. So I have a PowerPoint. Unfortunately, I don't think that we're going to be able to get it onto the projector tonight. I left copies up with council. I also left copies of the welcome packet that we use up with council. So if anybody wants some, I can also provide them electronically to Dawn and she can provide them to anyone who's interested. But I'd like to tell you a little bit why these guys are different and how thorough this is and try to address some of the concerns that I think people have when they hear a sober living facility might be coming into a town. First of all is the structure. You know, there's intake screening. There's a 14-day, what they call a blackout period where people are on very strict curfews. They're on curfews all the time, very strict curfews during that first 14 days. And they can actually be voted out of the house by the other people in recovery in the house during that 14-day period if they're not adhering to the rules. And everybody in these houses has been through an intensive inpatient program. They're all in recovery. They're not active users. Active users are not protected by the ADA. They're not protected by the FHA. And if we had active users in a house, you could boot us out the door. It's not residential anymore. So we do urine screenings twice a week, scheduled once randomly for everybody in the houses. We make sure that nobody's on any sort of substance other than any prescribed medically assisted treatment. And if they are on any substance, they're kicked out immediately and referred to another inpatient facility. We don't just put them out on the street. We take them elsewhere where they can get better help. We have live-in managers, night manager and a day manager. We have nightly house and curfew checks. We have managers overseeing urine testing, policing resident meeting attendance. Everybody has to attend a minimum of two meetings a week, AA or NA. Everybody has to participate in big book readings in the house. So we're constantly making sure that people are taking the steps to remain in recovery. We're also doing everything we can to care and monitor for the well-being of these residents. The place is locked down at 11:00 PM. TVs are off by 2:00 AM. There's only two residents allowed outside of the structure on the property so that you won't see people hanging around, you know, smoking cigarettes or later in generally on your sidewalks. We have 24-hour camera surveillance and we have zero tolerance policy for any use of narcotics, alcohol, any crime, any violence. We refer people elsewhere at that point. We also have a strict employment requirement. So if someone comes into the facility unemployed, they have three weeks to get a job. If they don't get a job, they're referred elsewhere. So people won't be sitting around these houses during the day. They won't be sitting on your streets wandering around during the day. They'll be at work. Residents are not permitted to have cars. I know a lot of concern with these things is where they got to park. The only cars are the managers, so you're talking about two cars for a house, just like most residential uses. We only allow visitors, family members to visit and that's only on the weekends. And it's only a limited number of family members at a time. So it's not, you know, a whole house full of people having visitors and putting more cars on your street. The houses are properly maintained inside and out. In most instances, the houses are approved from the condition they exist at the time they're acquired by a different way. I have some photos in the slides and that's about it, you know? Again, the concept of sober living, it's people who are already through a program who are in recovery. So you're not going to have, yeah.
How many other towns are you in, sober living?
How many other towns are you in?
Four.
Four other towns.
Which ones?
We're in Sharon Hill, Brooklyn, Chester.
We're in Chester, although we're in the process of moving out of Chester because we're having difficulty getting the quality of residents that we think want to be focused on their recovery.
Is that, that's what's going to happen here?
It's not, well, I don't want to start arguments.
Is that facility, the Chester facility is what you're looking to move into Eddie Stone? Or is this just an additional facility?
This is a new facility.
And also in addition to that, what type of criminal background do these residents go through?
I mean, we don't take any dual diagnosis people if that's a concern. So if you're talking about someone who's a Megan's Law offender or something like that, we're not bringing that in.
There's no Megan's Law, no Megan's Law.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Any type of.
Anyone with open source, anything like that.
So any type of sexual?
No sexual, no one would be allowed.
There's generally a different level of care necessary to make those people successful and it's not the focus of this model.
You said they're allowed to have prescription prescribed, not a.
So.
Suboxone one of those that are allowed that are prescribed?
Suboxone, Vivitrol and, Suboxone and Vitrol, I guess, although most people are moving to Vitrol nowadays, I think, for their medically assisted treatment. That's a shot. And it doesn't have the narcotic effect as some of the others.
How many people in a house?
Well, the house we're looking at now is at 1401 Eleventh Street. 1401 Eleventh Street. It's a four-bedroom. You're probably talking about two people per room. Well, that's what we're looking for now. The borough ordinance is allowed seven. You need variants to go up to eight. We intend to pursue that variance, although if we have to live with seven, that's what we'll live with.
And there's a 24-hour fund care manager or whatever per se?
Two, two.
Two.
So there's people, two managers living in the house. One's responsible for the house during the day. One's responsible for the house during the evening.
Do they physically live in there or are they just working there?
Physically living there.
So that means there's only five residents then if it's as far as it's seven right now?
If we're going to be at five, if you count the managers as residents, that's correct.
Aren't they residents?
They're living there, but a lot of communis pallys don't count them in the residential.
If they're living there, they're residents.
So we take, we take, okay, so.
Are you renting this house or are you going to purchase this house?
Going to purchase the house. And the money's coming from insurance patients. We have a lot of self-paid people because we require everybody to be employed. And additionally, there's going to be county assistance coming in the future.
Yeah, I have to ask the borough. Do we have an ordinance about something like this, known felons, known alcoholics being a distance from a school? Because down Leaver Street, those kids walk down there every day. And I have worked for 50 years in a hospital, in and out of crisis units with people and everything else. And I know today they're all happy and gay. They're going to work and they go off and those kids are walking down that street. Now, I thought we had an ordinance or zoning or something that close to the school, that's only a block away. And in case they're going to walk in.
Mr. Solicitor, and I'll answer the question, but if I get off track, please. The answer, the short answer is yes, the borough does have an ordinance. And I believe that we would go as far as to say that at this current time, the borough has an ordinance that prohibits this type of use except for certain areas that are zoned. And the area that is, the use is permitted is in an area where you've got institutional zoning. I believe the reason why Mr. Madren is here this evening is on behalf of the sober living facility. There has been case law that says that these types of ordinances that we have in this borough are not legal.
Let me look at the ordinance and I'll check it out and I'll give my card to you.
Excuse me, you said that that was on what?
Institutional, I believe, were the zones where you're allowed to have.
That was an old store. That was Med Store. Shouldn't that be zone commercial? Can you check that?
This, I believe the house is zone residential, actually.
Probably R3.
At that quarter. We also believe that case law says this is a residential use, but that's, you know, that's an issue we'll have to discuss.
Is this Eddie Stone people that you're going to put in that house?
It's people who come, I mean, look, we think that Eddie Stone is an ideal location. We would be happy to have Eddie Stone residents who are in recovery. Some people want to get away from their environment because they have friends in that environment who might drag them down. But right here in Eddie Stone, we have, you have AA, NA meetings, five nights a week. You have access to transportation for these people who won't have cars but will have jobs. So we do think it's a good fit for a professionally run organization.
Now, I come from another small town that we used to live in. And at one point, there was absolutely no recovery houses. And then all of a sudden, they let one in and then boom, all of a sudden, they were popping up on every, literally every street. Now, the problem that they ran into when they brought sober living into a community was not the fact that the program is good and it was all well intentions, but the problem is that you're dealing with people that have mental issues, emotional issues and drug abuse. So when they fall off the wagon, so to say, that, and like this lady was just saying, there's unlimited possibilities of anything that could happen. Some guy could go crazy and decide to burn a house down. Or I'm not saying that that would be the case, but in Levittown, we had a huge problem. And I tell you that when they did the statistics, they said that crime almost doubled, doubled a month after these sober livings came into the community.
I mean, look, I.
And that community didn't have much more speaking area or population as it's now.
And if you get some of the, look, these things are unregulated right now by the Commonwealth. There's been some discussion about regulations. It's never gone through. I know Sarah Madrigal, when he was there, was working on it. And you will get people who are unscrupul. And you will get people who are unscrupulous opening sober living facilities. It's just a fact of life, you know.
Do you think it's a good idea blocking a half a way a bar from where the house you're looking at?
I, it's not a particular concern for us. You know, because we're on.
They're everywhere in the world, man.
Yeah, I mean, look, unless you gotta put them in the woods.
My concern is that, it's just that, you know, the potential of people coming, you know, relapsing or, you know, even bringing, for example, say if somebody had a problem, like he was in a gang or something, he's trying to get his life together. And what if them problems in his neighborhood, they find out he lives here and come here and try to, you know.
What if a gang member moves into town? I mean, you know, we, we have an epidemic right now. There's probably heroin users on many of the blocks in A. What you don't have in those houses is people doing, urine testing them twice a week and moving them out if they're, if they test out.
But how long does heroin stay in the system?
Three days.
Three days.
It would've been nice if you went to the neighbors that lived on the street over there. We've sold seven or eight houses in the last three or four years, wait till they find this out. There are gonna be few.
Well, listen, we're here to talk you.
Because it's ridiculous because I got two grandchildren across the street. And I don't particularly like, I knew what they were up to, but now I found out it's 1401, as I thought. But let me tell you something, these young people spent all their money to come here. To get out of Philadelphia, other places, because they like it here. The school district, the town, everything. And now their dreams are wiped away. Wait till they find this out. This is terrible.
I mean, look, I, I, I disagree with you on the impact, but that's okay.
There will be a big impact.
That's okay.
We're not used to this.
I think what you will see happen if this does come in is that it's gonna be like any other house in the neighborhood. I know you don't, I know you don't, I wouldn't either.
I have your phone number because I'll be calling you every night if something going on.
Absolutely.
I have a question, Mike. Are the people that are in Chester, are they come, the ones that you're putting in Eddie Stone?
No.
There's no one from?
Yeah, well, they're.
These will be new intakes, okay? I mean, it's not like people are living here forever, you know? I mean, we're talking usually six to 12 months. Although, we, you know, if someone's in recovery, they feel like they need to extend that, obviously there's some flexibility. But you're talking about six to 12 months.
And why do you wanna move out of Chester?
Well, our Chester house, we would, we just decided to close the Chester house because, because of crime, basically. Or residents, Rob. They're going to work in the bus and they're living in a silver home and they're, they're experiencing violence.
Our police work very, very hard trying to keep all of that out of Eddie Stone. I mean, they work very hard, they do a great job. Sometimes we get a little bit that spills over, maybe a drug, drugs or whatever.
Listen, I, I wanna say.
I don't, I would be afraid too of your people not succeeding in Eddie Stone either.
And that does happen, people don't succeed. It's not you go to rehab, you get into recovery, you decide that you don't wanna go back home because, you know, that area wasn't good, it's where you used to use that or you had, you know, certain things you didn't wanna be around. And they want to go into a little more of a secure or accountable environment. And they don't make it, they, they're not ready for recovery. But once, things for certain, it will be immediately noticed, they will be urine and it will be gone that day, that hour.
Well, we're not making any decisions.
Can you limit, how many gases can we open?
We refer them to.
So.
And then if need be, when we.
Let me take a, I'll look at the, we're not making any decisions. We're not making any decisions. Listen, this is just a matter of introduction.
Right, right, Mike's just, Mike's just coming in to go.
But it's.
You could play.
Can we limit how many, that's the thing.
So. We haven't bought the product. We look at the ordinance and I understand the community's interest. You guys are the, you guys are the council for the, for the governmental, you're the governmental body for the area that we're looking at. So unlike what many people would have done, which is just move the damn thing in, we can't even talk to you.
No, we appreciate that, but you gotta understand there's a lot of concern.
I, I agree with you. Yeah, no, I, I get it, I get it.
It goes along with it, because zone residential, they can't just move in, they can't just do what they want.
That's not true.
It's, yeah, you can't run a business out of a residential.
It's not a business.
Well, they, they profit, right?
You said it was institutional, so set up more, but it's not, you said it's residential.
I'm telling you what I believe our ordinance says.
And I believe you're wrong.
What Mr. Madrin is here this evening to say is even though the borough of Eddie Stone has an ordinance that may restrict this type of use, that there is case law that says that that ordinance is not enforceable because these become a living environment, it's a residential environment.
He also said heroin is.
That's what Mr. Madrin is saying this evening.
For three days and AmericanCenters.org, Addiction Centers.org says it's no longer detectable after two days, so.
Do they have to have an OD? Are they gonna have to get a license?
They will have, they will have.
Look, we're gonna buy for a CEO, we're gonna do everything that anyone would do when they're coming in to move into the borough.
I just learned about this, Rob.
We live at 708 Eddie Stone.
Yeah, be sure it's in the town.
We're actually looking at 710, right next door to us. Because we figured we'd be, what, what better use would be, because we would be next door.
Who brought you, who brought you up to the store?
Excuse me?
Who brought you up to the store that you found out about, or you walked around?
Well, we've been in business for a while, we're all over downtown, Philadelphia, and all that, I mean, this isn't, this is what we do.
Well, there's a lot of neighbors up there who put out quite a bit of money to fix up the house.
Yeah, we live in Eddie Stone, we live in Eddie Stone.
The experience that we had in Eddie Stone was a recovery walk. That's what brought us to Eddie Stone originally, so.
Got a big party, big celebration.
It was a nice recovery walk where we were introduced to the area a few years back.
It was welcoming for recovery.
We got married there, so.
How many people are successful out of these places?
Yeah, it was the recovery, it was the overdose awareness for, for recovery.
And what is the success rate?
Success rate, I mean, I don't have to say success rate. I can say that for us sober living, our average day is a year. We have a manager right here who's celebrating here in recovery now, in front of our house now. So, I mean, the people recover, people do this, it's needed.
The, the purpose of Mr. Madrin coming in front of council this evening was to introduce the intent. Council is not taking any action this evening to say that it is allowable or not allowable. Council is taking into consideration the, the information that Mr. Madrin has presented this evening. We will, we will work with our solicitor, find out what our ordinances are in place now. We'll work with our code enforcement team. And, and once they have submitted a certificate of occupancy, a request for certificate of occupancy, we'll make sure that everything is in place before any type of permit or CO is issued.
Thank you, guys, for your attention.
Thank you for hearing me.
Mike.
Mike, okay, before you go anywhere.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned?
Yeah, let's roll along and I've got enough counselors at the table that we do have a forum, so we'll continue with the meeting. We're not in a position to take any action right now at this time, but, and a few things just to keep us very transparent and to make sure that we're accountable is that, you know, we'd like to discuss any right to knows that we've received. I know that Mr. Bolton, you put a request in the middle of January. You requested a copy of the employment agreement with the borough manager. You've received that. If you have any questions or comments about what you received, or was your request fulfilled and we can close the file.
Mike, question was filled.
Ms. Jones, I believe the only other right to know that we have that's open right now is a right to know from a Mr. Lee. We got it on the 29th of January. He is requesting some records, mostly tax and code related for the property at 1229 Chester Pike. Is that the transmission stop? And I'm not 100% sure, but I think it might be the transmission business. Now that we have the tax collector, congratulations to Mr. Corcoran, if he's still here. But, you know, Dawn will be working with Mr. Corcoran to get the tax records and also working with our code enforcement team to get any type of permits or violations that have been issued. Can, you might have to send them a letter of extension just requesting additional, it's already been done, right, perfect. And the reason why is that we, at the time, didn't have a tax collector. We'll also make the efforts as anybody wants to address in public forum, bring forward any concerns that you have. We're taking those addresses seriously enough that, you know, we'll take notes and make sure that we're, you know, resolving your, your issues, your concerns, answering your questions, so. I believe before we go to public forum, we have the engineer's report, so Ms. Katanga, very.
I'm gonna be very short.
Very short.
Okay, there are, there are a few resolutions that I've requested this evening. The first is the resolution that you would take up next, actually, under actions. There is a small communities grant for improvements for Lighthouse Hall that we're suggesting be done. It's a $60,000 grant, so the match would be no more than $20,000. The first $20,000 is a zero match and the next one is a fifty percent, so.
Fifty percent?
So it's, it's to a maximum of $20,000 because the maximum project is $60,000. I have, I have an email out to the southeast advisor. We have to have a pre-constru-, or a pre-application with her or him, I'm not sure if it's gonna be Gene or Drew. So I'm still waiting to hear when they can make it over to take a look at the building. Don't give me yea or nay, this will work, that will work, what can be put in there. So I have a lot of this of things that I know we wanna get done.
Okay.
We'll see what, what can stick as part of a grant, what can't. The, the next one is a resolution for the TC DI grant. This grant is for planning only, this is not any construction. So what we're asking is that we do a study to, for improvements along the 291 corridor. This would be vehicular, pedestrian, bike, whatever economic development that could be done throughout the whole corridor. So that we have a map, we have an idea of this is what we wanna see along 291 that will improve it to a point, I don't know how many people go up to Tidocum by, by Palhatton Road, for example. We have the facilities, we have the train station, we, we could put the section in for East Coast Greenway for the bike. We could get some kind of a trail system in that we could get to the waterfront, to the piece of property that we're, will be receiving at some point from, from Alliance. So there's a lot of very big positives here, we just need to make sure that the transportation is there of stops and other things. So that's something that they would look at as part of, of this grant application. You would be required to follow very similar rules to what we follow for every project. You have to go out for a, an RFP for a consultant once, once we were given the money. And then there's a lot of, I don't wanna say audit, but auditing items that will have to be taken care of and supported on with these grants. The, the next one is the resolution requesting the county aid liquid fuels funds. Each year, the county receives liquid fuels funds from Penn Dot, from the state. And in lieu of the county utilizing those funds, they take those funds and they distribute them based on population. So we get a push of that every year, typically in February when we ask for the resolution. County council usually at their last meeting in February approves an adoption of that, of the resolution. And then once the resolution, we do a project, we get that reimbursement, go back into liquid fuels funds.
Mark, you guys prepare that, right? Something prepares the resolution for liquid fuels?
No.
No, I'm not.
Okay, you have the resolution.
Now, I have the resolution for liquid fuels. The next one is, is a resolution, it's actually an application. And that application, believe it or not, and it's been quite a while, Dunkin' Donuts has still been working through Penn Dot to get their highway occupancy permit. Do you recall one of the things that we requested when Dunkin' Donuts came in? Was that they take a look at the illegal left-hand turns. We've got people that are used, that are turning, going the opposing direction on 291 to get into the driveway. That ha, that will be resolved as part of the HOP. The only thing that is missing, that has not been submitted to Penn Dot at this point, is this resolution, which is actually an application to make the changes to that intersection. They will also, as part of their project, be putting in head lights and, and buttons. So you'll be able to hit a button, there are buttons on some of the, not all, some intersections. Be able to hit a button, you'll see a flasher that'll tell you how long you have to walk. So that is part of their application, will be part of their project. Just to follow up on that, what I was told by their attorney is that once they have the HOP, they will then go back to Dunkin' Donuts to discuss the project. You know, that's been on hold for about two years now. So they will, if Dunkin' Donuts or another entity wants to utilize that, has that drive-through with the gas station, they'll, they'll be working towards that. I don't know that I have to, to report anything on the RACP, known as the RCAP. Why, I have no idea, because it's R-A-C-P, we call it RCAP. That, we, the chief and I have been in discussions, we sat down to talk about the various floor plans, how we, how we could work this through the program. Spoken to Senator Killian's office and I think we're, we're all set to put the application in. They're not announcing the rounds until the end of February. By that point, chief and I will have most of the information together to submit it. And I can report the general progress.
General progress. I think the only thing I may not have on the agenda is the HOP. I have been, yes, until I transition to.
Are you doing your resumes?
Yes, I am. Now, she's answering the right to knows, we're just listening to right to knows to make sure.
You're not answering the right to knows?
I'm not answering the right to knows.
We still haven't seen a resume from Dawn, I don't know where Paul.
Have you seen a right to know or a resume from Dawn or just a verbal request on the?
We should've gotten it in the beginning, we're council.
We've gotten it in the beginning.
Can you give a resume to council?
Well, it's kinda moot point now, right?
I would agree with you that it's moot point, but if somebody's.
It's disgrace, but I mean, you know. We're elected officials too, we receive nada information, so that any.
We don't know what your qualifications are and I don't know why Mr..
Yeah, disgrace.
The agenda and doing the job of what the manager is doing.
That's why we got so many information.
He's not your answer.
He knows where to lead, that's for sure.
Public forum, Mary Ann Floss.
I have some questions about, do we still have an ordinance about how the commercial vehicles parked in the borough on the streets?
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Well, why is that big truck on 13th Street a year now? There's no Eddie Stone sticker on it and he comes and goes and last week was there two weeks and didn't move it. And the other week, a friend of his came and parked his on Leaper Street. Now, why is it there? We're crunching, we park, try to park our cars in the alley so that people that cross the street can park.
I understand your concern, a lot of the guys go out and double-check 13th Street and we are roaming. I send the guys different blocks, different lights, so we have fair and equal policing throughout the community. I will make sure since there's a point of interest that we hit that.
Now, another thing is down where Wayne lives on the end of Eleventh Street. I know that that's a thorn in everybody's side because I sold them the house, so. But a friend of mine went to his lot and bought your car. I didn't think he had a, he had a license to sell cars anymore in the borough. Now, what's going on? Do some people have a privilege to do and stuff, and others don't?
Were they personally owned, and do you approve of that?
Pardon me?
Yeah, were they personally owned, and do you approve of that? Or is that just hearsay?
If he went down there and Wayne signed the, um, the, the things.
You're out of your mind, that's hearsay.
What did Wayne give him a picture? Get your facts right before you come here.
I have those, they drove by.
That's why I came here, 'cause I knew you were gonna say, and Wayne's.
No, they drove by, saw the car, and they went to Wayne's.
I'm so glad that after twenty-two years, I can still entertain you.
Oh, but it's not right, in his, in those two parking spaces from Eddie Stone, he's parked his car there, covers it up and leaves it there.
Oh, no, it was towed away, why don't you ask about it?
I asked about it.
Ask about it.
This, this.
I asked Wayne about it.
Ask about it.
This slash, we, we enforce parking what I believe to be equal and fairly. Now, I've issued citations to many residents, I'm not gonna pick out to whom I have or have, we have or have not issued citations. But we'll tell you that people have been impacted by that, we have been issuing citations. And that is what the job of the police department is. Now, as far as someone selling a vehicle without a license, I feel as though that would be something for code enforcement to double check into.
Actually, you should.
But I don't think it's, you know, a police, like, I don't know who has a licensure to do what, and that's not in my scope of practice.
Do we still have to have, if you have a business, a commercial business, have to have your license in full view?
There is no license in Eddie Stone.
If he had, say, say somebody gave him a license and he, he's gonna sell cars, doesn't he have to have a license in full view?
Did he sell personal cars, or did he sell business?
We have a business license.
Yeah, but did he, but did he sell personal cars? 'Cause I can sell my car.
I'm gonna tell you something, there can't be personal cars, or so you have twelve cars.
I got twenty-five cars, I got twenty-five cars, I got twelve on my insurance policy. I have every car down there is inspected, insured, tagged, and stickers.
I've got permits.
And parking permits.
Uh, but I, but.
I can park them up front of your house.
You have parking permits for every one of his cars?
Every one.
What's that got to do with you? You know what, you're, you're complaining about that sober house, you could probably give him a resident, worry about your house.
I've got twenty-five cars.
You want twenty-five, sure.
I just think that's a lot.
And I don't wanna get into a debate, but between two residents. Yeah, I don't want someone using a hand situation where you're, you're having to engage.
What he wants saying, definitely what he wants saying.
Ms. Wilson.
Can we get an ordinance to limit the amount of cars you can own or park?
Well, I had a simple question about recycling. I don't know where to start.
I would welcome a simple question.
I don't know where to start on this, I have opinions or not, anyway. What company do we currently use for recycling?
What, to collect or to deposit?
Well, when we first started our recycling program, we had a list of things that we could and couldn't recycle.
Right.
And then if we change companies, companies have a different list, and everything isn't, is, is recyclable if they have the facility to recycle it, or have the way to, to, um, sell it, or, or whatever. So you can't just say recycling, and my concern is that if we have a different company doing it, and we're now paying money to do it, do we have a really good idea of what actual acceptable recycling is? Can we get that updated?
When we, when we instituted recycling, we were using a company called Blue Mountain. Uh, Blue Mountain, from the time that we had initiated discussions about recycling, to the time we actually started collection, sold, um, to, it was called Recommunity. Recommunity gave us a list of all of the acceptable single-stream recyclers. At this time, the borough still collects curbside, and we are using J P Mascaro for the deposits. Okay, J P, J P Mascaro has not rejected any of our loads, so therefore I can tell you with reasonable certainty that everything that we put on the previous list is able to be recycled through J P Mascaro. And certainly we should ask J P Mascaro to give us a list that's got their logo on it, and that's something that certainly we can, we can work on here in a few weeks.
Paying for the service, and we should maximize if there are things that are making it difficult for them to recycle it, and it shouldn't be in there, and it should be trash anyway, then might as well put it in the trash and save our money, um, if it's not, um, actual recycled, you know, actually being recycled.
Understood.
Where's the trash at?
The Delaware County Solid Waste.
And the recycling goods?
J P Mascaro.
Do we get any money for the recycling?
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
Everybody pays for recycling now.
But they're ready? I told them down and everything and then sell it?
Yep, they overdone it.
What do they do with it?
They, they find people who are recycling it, it gets recycled, it gets reused, but it's not a profitable thing anymore. It's now, everybody pays their way to do the right thing, but if there are things that we're putting in our recycling that are slowing that down, or, or could easily be put in the trash instead, 'cause that's a different rate.
I think somebody should reach out to Arrow Aggregates and see if they want, or getting our bottles.
The issue with the Arrow Aggregates is, is that they have to have it milled down to the pellet size that they need. So they bring in, from my understanding, they bring in material that is already milled down to their specifications. So it's not a situation where they're just over there breaking glass. They actually have to buy a product that meets their specification because.
That will lower Dunkin' Donuts big time.
Well, so then that, that brings up another question, and that is that some communities have identified some items that actually do bring in money, that there is a market for, and they collect them separately, and so there is.
Sorcore. Okay, what do they collect it?
They collect, um, uh, office paper, and they collect, uh, aluminum cans, and there, there's a list of things that they get money for that offset the, the cost of the recycling. Now, we used to have bins that you could put, um, bottles in, but, and I don't know whether bottles are on the list of things that, you know, I mean, we have a, a market. Clearly, they're, um, using it. But, you know, there might be some creativity of mind that can, um, offset some of the cost of actually doing the recycling that we need to pay for, because that's the right thing to do, but.
I may, I may be wrong, but I think when Mr. Stewart initial- initially instituted the recycling, he was trying to make it as easy as possible, as he could on the residents, by single streaming it, so that he didn't have to separate everything.
And things change, you know, now we're paying for it, so, you know, it's not gonna, it might be.
Just take it and go.
Well, I don't think we should stop doing it, but I'm, I'm thinking that there might be, there are other.
Personal preference, I mean, you'll take your cans to somewhere, take them.
Right, and if there are, if there are things like aluminum cans that always make money, then, you know, is there a, a mechanism for doing it? I don't know.
But I'll tell you one thing, our trashmen do a great job. And you ask them, if I can't lift something, they will do it, they are really nice guys.
Yep.
Yeah.
They go over to both. Yeah, thanks, Mary Ann.
All right, it's already be, uh, kinda late in the night here, but, uh, I just had a few things I wanted to get off my chest. Especially considering that the next meeting is gonna be for the budget, I had a couple of concerns with that. Um, I think that's very fine, I'm gonna read it off. Um, I've been coming to meetings for a while now, and if I haven't made one in person, I definitely watched it online. But for one, I'd like to thank the council for establishing the camera, and so, so every resident in this neighborhood can see exactly what's said and what's done, rather than selective editing from the, uh, previous camera that we had here. So I just wanna say thank you, and thank you, Garley. So, with that being said, and I'm sorry to be the dead horse here, and I mean no disrespect to anybody in the room, but there's just some things I can't wrap my, my brain around. There are certain members of council who on a daily basis used to criticize previous council, and even go as far as to say that people were getting kickbacks, where there was some type of conspiracy, and there's being that there was not enough money in the budget to cover everything that the residents would like to have.
Am I, am I editing this right now, is that the problem?
Excuse me, uh, I'm, I'm, it's my time, thank you. And because of this town, let's go to new council members and for, for a new change, and the first thing that we do, as the new council does, is they add two hundred thousand dollars for our budget, without adding any services. We let go two dedicated men that did our code enforcement, and did, did a hell of a job, in my opinion, and I'm a contractor, so he was, he busted my butt, you know, a lot of times. And contractors know, they don't come to Eddie Stone and play around, 'cause you had John Lyman here. But since then, since that action has been taken, John Lyman had, I've seen four different properties of people coming in, not one permit posted. They're in there with dump trucks, demoing entire houses, working freely, not one question was raised. And I just don't think that that would've happened if John Lyman was here. John Lyman was here on weekends to make sure contractors weren't in here, and the reason why that is, is because some contractors do crappy work. You know, some people are makeshift electricians, they can wire something different, boom, all these rash fires happening, and stuff like that is because of bad contracting. So it doesn't make sense to me that the residents of the town are paying double the amount for a job that was previously taken up by two very competent men, and they actually care about this town. I know John, John Lyman was tough sometimes, and that, like I said, as a contractor, it was frustrating, but what he did and how he did it was exactly what this town needs. I know Mr. Wilson has slandered John's name by saying he also receives kickbacks, as usual with no evidence, but besides him, I've never heard one person say anything bad about him, and definitely nothing about his integrity. I don't know what the whole story is between him and you, Mr. Council President, but it's very suspicious of him being fired as soon as you take office as president. I don't care what our solicitor says, common sense tells us that the president's vote in this matter should not have been cast due to a conflict of interest, because as I, as I'm aware, you were cited on several different code violations, and subsequently, immediately upon you taking it as presidency and new council vote, he was fired. And adding double the budget, it just doesn't, doesn't make sense to me, but it just sounds like nothing but retaliation for the inspector actually doing his job. I've seen several, like I said, I've seen several contractors here doing work with no interference, and then my next concern is Mrs. Jones, and I mean no disrespect to Mrs. Jones. But I'm just trying to understand the steps that the council took in bringing Miss Jones in, while also retaining the Vicente's in a six-month, uh, transition period. And it just seems to me, uh, six months is, is a little bit, uh, extreme for a transition period. Um, I, I've, I've went to work for different companies, and I've had my skill set, and I was given two days to get to know what they do and how they do things, and I was, boom, I was on on my own. Six months seems a little bit more like a training period to me than a transition period, considering the fact that we have learned recently that she's not even qualified for QuickBooks, and not even bonded. I just don't understand why we're paying seventy thousand dollars as a startup price plus benefits for that service. When it hasn't, wasn't advertised, which was another one of the things that the Democrats used to say, was that nobody posted about any jobs, nobody heard about this job opening, and I think it would've been fair to give some, maybe some of the residents in the town that are qualified a chance to at least apply. So, and I'm not trying to accept, attack the Vicente group at all, or anybody in, in particular, and from what I understand about her appointment at Brookhaven was as a secretary, of assistant borough secretary in charge of scheduling appointments for inspectors. How does that qualify her to manage the entire borough? And then you have to bring up the question, do we even need a borough manager? I was just, I'm only comparing Brookhaven, because that's where she came from, Brookhaven doesn't have a borough manager. Brookhaven does things the same way, based on the different committees, the different responsibilities, and that's how the borough has been maintained. And they have eighty, excuse me, they have over eighty-two hundred, eighty-two, eighty-eight thousand residents. So, that just goes to show you, a, a small, small town with that kind of, uh, salary, especially when, when the whole time we were being told that we were paying so much money for things that we didn't need, like a house, that was sixty grand, well, the house was just offset by one, one salary, not including benefits. So if we're worried about money and where it's coming from, I just don't understand how we're gonna pay for the, the increase when we're, we're counting on money that hasn't even arrived, or isn't even promised, and we're banking on this, hoping to offset that, we're just being a double advocate. What if that, none of that comes through? What, first, what if this budget meeting doesn't go and this budget doesn't pass?
Then it reverts to the previous one.
Yeah, but we still have an employee costing seventy thousand, plus the, the new ones, so that's still the same amount of money we have to pay out, but none of that other stuff about agreeing to have, sell the house, that, that's out the window, am I right? So I just don't, I don't understand why we're, uh, why we took the step so quickly before, uh, if budget was even passed, in order to find out if we even had the money.
The word of the budget, budget passed, Jesse, but what happens is when a new council takes?
I, I, I understand, I understand the process, I do, uh, you know, I understand that the new council wants to do the things the way, and, and that's expected. I, I just don't understand how, when, uh, my friend was consistently attacked on a daily basis for spending money frivolously that we didn't have, and, and not having E M T service, and which everybody wants E M T service, and everybody could agree with that, but then the first action you guys take is to add two hundred thousand dollars on the budget without adding any services, and that's not even including adding.
Now, that is very much including that.
No, it's not, yes, it is, over half of that is the E M T. My understanding is, is not.
Your, your understanding has been correct.
Okay, well, if I, if I'm wrong, I apologize.
So.
Well, two hundred thousand, okay, and, and that's a money, but that's not even a guarantee either, am I right? If this, uh.
The funding and, the funding and the cost to the borough are contingent upon one another.
Okay.
We will not be paying for the E M Ts unless we also have an agreement in place with the firehouse.
Okay.
They go together.
All right, so, so it's at least over a hundred and some thousand dollars added without adding services, right?
They are one hundred and thirty out of that two hundred.
All right, I apologize, I misread it.
That, I would consider that a pretty significant service.
Huh?
I would consider that a pretty significant service. Mr. Sprague, all due respect, is the budget that was passed, the E M Ts had fifty-seven thousand dollars budgeted for what was passed at the end of two thousand nineteen. The, 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 the budget that is going to be voted on on Wednesday night includes a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the E M Ts. So, over half of the two hundred thousand dollars that you referenced is right with the E M Ts.
Well, not, not, she, she's cost seventy thousand dollars plus benefits, which is another.
Eighty-five dollars an hour for the inspector.
Yeah, for the inspector, which is another eighty-some thousand dollars per year.
You doubled.
So that, that's a hundred and, what, twenty thousand right there, plus benefits.
You got a hundred and twelve, that's eighty-four.
So, I mean, it's still over a hundred thousand dollars, and that didn't add anything.
And John Lyman was honorable and did a good job.
He did, and he, like I said, he busted my, my butt, he failed many.
I heard that from a lot of people.
I failed many inspections from him, and, and he scares off a lot of shitty con- crappy contractors, I'll tell you that. I mean, before I lived here, it was always known, if you don't have your shit together, don't go to Eddie Stone.
Right.
You know, and, and I just, I just don't, I don't see this new company as being like, I see them as like a corporation, and they're not gonna be in touch with the people, they're not gonna know somebody by their name, and they're not gonna be here as often. If they are here, they're, they're here for a specific reason, and then they go. John Lyman, he patrol the streets, make sure that people weren't walking in and out of a house with, with trash bags full of demo and not have any permits. I just think John was a good guy.
He was a good guy, he still was a good guy.
He was honorable, and he did a great job for this town.
Yep.
And I just don't, I didn't see the reason that we, uh, for the reason that we got rid of him.
Me either.
And, and, and just to clarify, I just wanted the, the question about Mrs. Jones' qualification to the post of, of the borough manager while we're still retaining Vicente's for a six-month period? I mean, is, is that, is that just me, or does six months seem a little bit excessive?
Well, I don't understand where you come up with the six-month transition period.
That's what you said, you said six months or more at the last meeting.
You did.
You did, you told, you told them that they needed, they needed a teacher, and then that's when we found out that she doesn't even know how to do QuickBooks. You did, you told you told them that they needed, they needed a teacher. And then that's when we found out that she doesn't even know how to do QuickBooks. And and today I just found out she's not bonded.
She's in the process of.
I I, which is understandable, but I can't go to a job and say, hey, listen, my license is pending, but can I have my job? And then hopefully I'll get it. You know, you know what I'm saying?
We were told she was doing the same job at Brookhaven, so why wasn't she bonded? Why didn't she know?
Right.
Why doesn't she know how to advertise?
Of her administrative skills?
I don't think that she should be. I just think I just think that the hours excessive.
Special service she hired.
Oh, I knew you could have hired.
She serves at the pleasure of council.
And we don't get transparent, but we'll see what we're doing.
In regards, in regards to the Pacentes, in regards to Pacentes, where this whole six-month thing comes in and what the six-month thing is tied to, is that we understood that we were two years behind on the on the financial audits. Pacentes have made a commitment that they're gonna get the financial audits complete. We understand and we heard lots and lots of discussion about the the SASS letter from the previous auditor which says that there's certain findings. Certain of those findings is the fact that the auditor was finding that you did not have people put into positions to separate duties and responsibilities. We're in the process now of separating those duties and responsibilities. We've engaged Donna Stillwell to come in, help us refine the policies, the procedures, the controls. The we we were very clear in the beginning that it was the intent of this new council to put a request for proposals out for a financial director. That the RFP would be very clear on what the financial director's duties and responsibilities were. And that the Pacentes would have an opportunity to be considered, just like any other firm, to provide those duties and responsibilities.
Okay, but I mean, you you did say last meeting that they were sitting here hand in hand with her for six months, that's why we have the third person.
Third person is to do accounts payable.
No, what I'm saying is that, that you said that someone was gonna be here for six months to show Mrs. Jones.
You have Tina and Dawn concentrating on accounts receivable. And now now what you've got in separation of duties and responsibilities. And we're starting to go down the path that we think Ms. Stillwell is gonna direct us to go down.
Uh, okay, so it's in your opinion that that she's fully qualified for that position at that rate?
In my opinion, she's fully qualified. In my opinion, she's fully qualified to be in the position that she's in at the pay grade that we offer.
And yet you put it in the paper, she's only got a high school education.
I didn't put it in the paper that she's got a high school education. I didn't put that in the paper that she has a high school.
What do you think of the residents of this town feel? How do you put it in there?
Was was the job ever funded?
It was, it was, but I said it.
No, it was never. One says that a borough manager cannot effectively do his or her job with with a a high school education. Where where does it say that anywhere?
No, but you got somebody to deal with the whole town, it's financial.
Who are the jobs that you're doing?
Be transparent and put everything in the table, but you didn't do anything. You walked in here like, come on down, the price is right. Before you walked in here, the lawyer, you guys, you know, I mean.
It's professional services, it's how professional services work.
You are professional with what you're doing. That's why John's out.
Yeah.
Poor John, he tried so hard.
He was a good man.
I I'm telling you, it's a disgrace.
I have the utmost confidence that the folks are very, I'd say.
Well, I have no. They got it right now, Eleventh Street. They're gutting the house, redoing the whole model, not one permit in the window. Where's that, where, John would have been there, I guarantee you.
Work trucks every day.
Dump trucks, dump trucks.
There's a dumpster that's been sitting there for over thirty days.
Any other public comment?
No.
Yes.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
My name is Kevin, I own the house that burnt down, it was on Eleventh Street.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the police and the fire department for showing up and doing all the great work. The police actually dragged everybody out, so nobody was harmed. You can replace the house, but human life is precious.
Exactly.
So once you say thanks, you give a bonus to the fire department.
Aww.
Hand it to them, they'd be appropriate. So just wondering, if the city council has a resolution or a motion that in honor of the great work done last week, that the officers of the fire department could see the results?
Sure.
Sure.
I'd also like to thank Michael Golden. Michael Golden ended up getting second degree burns by driving into the house and getting the people out.
Yep.
Don't forget you, you you have people out safely too. Yeah, I know, I'm just saying though.
You should teach them how to do it.
Yeah, uh, I was wondering what was going on with, uh, Chester Plake and Eddie Stone Avenue, the corner lot, looks like they're doing work over there.
They are.
What are they, what are they putting in there?
As we're doing.
I don't know. I know, I know that the owner of that property said that he has got all of the permits that have been submitted. All the permits have been submitted for a while.
It's not on Eleventh Street, they got dump trucks.
Lisa, do you know what's going in there?
No.
You're the engineer of the town and nobody came to you for planning or anything? I mean, they're doing work over there, they've blocked it all up and everything.
Where is the housing inspector, she'd be here to answer questions. And, you know, solve it.
Well, I mean, typically when you're talking about commercial property, it goes through planning. That's a commercial property.
Just trying not to call somebody you're paying eighty thousand dollars where they should be here doing work on permits. Okay, don't overanswer questions. Okay, go ahead.
I was answering answering a question because you asked me. And, um, the work at Chester Plake and Eddie Stone Avenue, there was a stop work order placed there last Friday because they were doing work without a permit. Do we know what they're doing here?
So we're 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 just giving people based on their words that they they submitted permits now?
They may need land. Yeah, I'm just writing on the record.
I can't even take out my trash cans without getting a permit. These people building a house.
Big grant for the drains on Saturday.
They opened up the whole back of that wall and blocked up the whole front.
Yeah, we're the housing inspector. I'll make sure, I I brought this report, I did not send it past.
What a shock. Alrighty, new business items at the, uh, meeting on Wednesday, Borough Action's gonna take counsel on the salary resolution. Uh, that that action was deferred until Wednesday at the advice of our solicitor since it very well dovetailed into being a budgetary issue that, you know, he felt it was more appropriate for us to take action at that on Wednesday's meeting. Also, the solicitor has advised me that he is going to have an agreement in place for the estro between the fire company and the borough regarding the seventy thousand dollar donation for implementing the EMTs at a twenty-four-hour day, seven-day-a-week, um, rotation. Ali, I believe he's gonna reach out to you probably tomorrow or Tuesday. Tomorrow with the details that you're comfortable in in the estro. Action item, council at this time will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the regular meeting held on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty. I got, uh, recognized, Councilwoman Reeves for the motion, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Gross. Council, any questions or comments before I call for action? Any comments or questions from the public before I call for action? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for the budget hearing number one, held on the twentieth of January, two thousand twenty. Council, can I have a motion? I have a motion from Mr. Sprague, seconded from Ms. Gross. Any questions or comments from council prior to taking action? Not hearing any comments or questions, any comments or questions from the public? No comments, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Council, at this time will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for budget hearing number two, which is held on the twenty-seventh of January, two thousand twenty. Entertain a motion, please. Motion from Council Gross, Councilwoman Gross, seconded from Vice President Yanuzzi. Any questions or comments from council prior to taking action? Not hearing any, any comments or questions from the public? No comments, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Treasury's report, Mr. Pacente, can you deliver the Treasury's report for January, two thousand twenty, please?
January twenty twenty, the general fund balance in Sharon Bank's four hundred ninety thousand, six thirteen forty-three. The silver fund and beneficial bank, sixty-four thousand, eighty-seven dollars, forty-one cents. Liquid fuel fund balance and beneficial is sixty-eight thousand, six eighty-six twenty-two. The beautification fund in Sharon Bank, one thousand, two thirty-seven forty-three. Getting the total for the end of month, at the end of January, twenty twenty, six hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-nine cents.
Council, entertain a motion to approve the Treasury's report. I got a motion on the table from Counselor Sprague, seconded from Vice President Yanuzzi. Any questions of council? Mr. Pacente, just one question, I'll assume that includes the three hundred fifty thousand dollars for the tax and revenue anticipation, is that correct? That's been funded?
Yeah, yeah, that's what that, yeah, that was funded the day after, what was the day we signed it? Was it the day you passed the resolution? Whenever that date was, I dropped the documents.
So that was funded then?
Yeah, I dropped the documents at Sharon Bank, they funded it then.
Prior to taking action, any questions or comments from the public? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Council, at this time will entertain a motion to approve the cash and receipts man's journal for the month of January, two thousand twenty, as presented by Mr. Pacente.
I have a question before we, um, accept this cash and receipts man's journal. Have all the committee chairs been signing their purchase orders?
Ms. Jones, I believe everybody has signed the purchase orders, correct?
Uh, yes, and I have been signing some of them that have been given to me because the bills had to be paid that day.
How come the chairman, how come the chairman heads aren't signing their?
Should be presented at the blotter. And I believe that everybody's been signing what's been presented at the blotter.
Does anybody have a problem? I mean, I know, Ms. Jones, you said that, you know, she signed them only because, um.
I was giving them one.
I believe, I believe that some bills, such as, you know, routine bills, you pay the water, you pay the cable, you pay the electric. Those are things that, you know, you certainly wanna bring to the attention of council. But I don't wanna hold up the payment so that we're into late fees or anything like that. But again, Ms. Stillwell's here, we're gonna have policies, procedures, and controls in place. And whatever adjustments we need to do, that's different than the way we've been doing business in the past, will be made.
I mean, we just changed it all up from years ago where they just got signed after the fact. And what was it, two, I guess, three years ago, right, Mark, you guys changed that? So that we were getting all the POs before the checks actually went out. We signed, we signed all on them before they were actually paid.
Yeah, yeah, the issue with the POs were, some of the, some of the POs we didn't sign and we weren't paying bills until the POs were signed. We were getting bills after the due date and then we had wait fees, so that was one of the issues brought up during the year.
Right.
Either way, somebody's gotta sign it before you finish.
Cause I don't think, I mean, that's an accounting, having the same person that's paying the bills, sign it off on POs. I mean, you gotta monitor expenditures while you're trying to be fiscally responsible. If you don't know what, you know, what bills are coming in, what's your signing?
Yeah, I'm I'm waiting to hear from Ms. Stillwell before I, I I am no longer in the service. Okay, any other comments? I do have a motion, correct?
Not yet.
I have a motion for Mr. Sprague, second please. Seconded by Council, uh, Vice President Yanuzzi. Uh, council, any questions or comments before I call for action? Uh, any members of the public, any questions or comments before I call for action? Yes, Ms. Wilson?
Sure, I think that points out why we need to have the examination of our procedures moving along. Because if there's any question about what's administrative, what's legislative, um, there need to be procedures. And it would be good to have someone weigh in on policy on, you know, who signs off on things and what's the flow of.
I am, I am one hundred percent in agreement with the procedure that Ms. Stillwell's about undertaking. One hundred percent in agreement. I think where there's a fundamental difference amongst the members of council is the timing in which that procedure occurs. Um, you know, again, you can't go back, you know, there's, there's, there's been a lot of, uh, darts and arrows thrown, you know, the Pacentes ways over the last couple of weeks, over the last couple of months, over the last couple of years. Lot of, lot of criticism, however, you know, the 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 boroughs have, well, the borough has remained afloat.
They've done, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't, they they've worked with virtually, and there were some years where they, all they worried about was paying the employees. For a thing that they should be worried about. Nobody understands, when the, when the Pacentes came in here in two thousand fourteen, Mark, two thousand thirteen, we were a whole year without a borough manager. Tina and I were doing the borough manager work because Francie had left you going out ill. They came in here to a shitstorm. We did, Tina and I did what we could do. I did liquid fuel reports, I did, only because I called, I didn't know how to do them. But I was off and I called and they walked me through it. Tina kept this, Tina kept this borough afloat with a little bit of knowledge that she had, cause she doesn't hear that long either herself. The Pacentes walked in here to a shitstorm. And all they've done for the past two years has been ridiculed and their names been thrown through the mud when these guys actually did one hell of a job for us. With a little bit of money to work with. I'm sorry.
So we need to find some common ground to where the Pacentes don't feel as if the procedure is threatening to to what they do on a daily basis. Um, and and I think the the meeting that's coming up with Joe and, uh, you know, Mark and and Mike and, you know, whoever else needs to be involved would be a very productive meeting. And I'm trusting that we have more action than discussion regarding, you know, getting the policies and procedures in place. Any other comments before I ask for the vote?
Is Storytime gonna be held at the, uh, Firehouse tomorrow, is that a definite?
I believe that's a definite.
Okay, wonderful girl. Thank you.
Can we get a, can we get a, a update on the police, um, contract?
Sure, let me go through the agenda and I'll I'll make comments. So all in favor, please say aye.
I got a question, I got a question. The Pacentes were brought in here, and when I got in here in two thousand and eighteen, all I kept hearing was about them and the audits. Then, uh, the clear blue sky comes, they were only given fifteen hours a week. Nobody knew that. You said, yeah, she knew it. Nobody knew that. So that's why all this stuff got dumped dumped on them. She only got fifty. Now remember, you got three people and all they get is seventy, seventy thousand, no benefits.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, no benefits. We're paying seventy plus the benefits, which is a hundred twelve. I mean, and then give eighty-four to that guy when John and Evan both together don't make fifty?
Yeah, eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, and 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 Evan and John got fifty.
That's for twenty hours.
That's what happens when you let people take over. They think, you know, we were supposed to be in the loop, all of us. We got left out in the, oh, yeah, we'll work, we will do everything, you see what you got. Here's, you know, even give somebody something that they throw in the bag at you.
Any other comments?
No, I'm sorry.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
No.
For the cash and distribution.
Right, no.
Let's do a roll call.
Council President Stewart?
Yes.
Vice President Yanuzzi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves?
No.
Councilman Sprague?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Wilson has left. Councilwoman Gross?
No.
What's your a yes and a no?
No, I guess the other thing.
Oh, okay. I guess the people we.
No, okay.
So we have three yes to three no, this is a tie.
Mr. Muso, when it comes to financial decisions, does the mayor have a vote to break a tie on a financial question? Mr. Mayor?
No.
Say. No bills will be paid and no money's deposited.
That was for the month of January. It's already been done. No, everybody's wife, but that was because they said they need to sign off on it. Chair, chairperson's supposed to sign off until you get, until you get, yeah.
Didn't?
Until, until you get the policy.
My understanding, anyway, but that's okay, no worries, we'll move forward. So enforcement report, Ms. Jones, are you prepared to give a review of the code enforcement activities for the month of January?
I certainly can. Uh, every, all the council people along with the mayor have been given the January codes report. January twenty-third, twenty twenty, nine oh three Industrial Highway, it's a commercial permit. Uh, cost was sixty thousand, fees taken in were three thousand four point fifty. January twenty-fourth, twelve forty-five East Thirteenth Street, residential Frank and Pagliazzo.
Well, that's in lieu of reading all of the permits and all of the work that's been done by Barry Isit during the month of January with council. would council have the pleasure that we just go to the summary of the total number of permits that were issued and the total amount of cash that was collected? If council's okay with that, then just give me the total, Ms. Jones.
Eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars.
And how many permits total? Do they have it on there?
Yeah, it's above, it's above the idols.
No, that was from January, that was...
Nineteen, from January twenty-third to January thirtieth.
Counsel, you've heard the code report for the month of January, two thousand twenty, as prepared by Barry Isit.
Where's the other, where's the other part of it for the beginning of January?
I, I believe John took care of the first day of January.
Mr. Wilson had his email turned off and he won't get access to the reports. That's right.
So counsel, entertain a motion to approve the code report for the month of January, two thousand twenty.
No.
I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Yanuzzi, a second.
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Sprague. In lieu of all in favor, I will go for a roll call vote, please. Ms. Jones?
Uh, Council President, Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Council Vice President, Mr. Yanuzzi?
Yes.
Ms. Reeves?
No.
Greg is not here.
What?
Hi, Council. Gross, no. Mr. Sigga?
No.
And then it's, uh...
I believe the...
Oh, Chris Sprague, I'm sorry. I apologize. Long night.
He's skinny guy down the end.
Yeah, so it's three to three again.
Three to three on the code enforcement report for the month of January, two thousand twenty. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor votes no. The motion does not carry. Please look before Mr. Isit that his report has been rejected by council and have Mr. Isit appear in front of council at our March meeting to resubmit the report for the month of January.
And please let Mr. Isit know that it wasn't because of his report, but because of the fact that Mr. Wilson had John's email turned off and John could not produce his part of the report.
Does Mr. Lyman submit a report for the month of December, two thousand nineteen?
Not that I'm aware of.
So with Mr. Lyman not submitting a report for two thousand nineteen, I will table that since there is not a report to be reviewed.
Last meeting, I believe Mr. Wilson was supposed to have, uh, the...
I believe that his email was turned back on, but we'll have to have Mr. Wilson come in and verify that. Mr. Macheski, the police report for the month of January, two thousand twenty.
Okay. Uh, January, police report for January, twenty twenty, two hundred seventy-nine call to service, thirty-five citations issued, nine traffic accidents, uh, fifteen deaths, twenty-six parking citations and fifteen criminals. Also, Mr. Stewart, uh, did you skip over an agenda that's nice to move?
I, I, I'm realizing that I skipped it over and I'll address it before I adjourn.
No problem.
Counsel, you've heard the police report for January, two thousand twenty. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Yanuzzi, seconded from Counselor Gross. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, chief. Got a report approved. Uh, Ms. Jones, can you give the fire report for the month of January, two thousand twenty, please?
Do you know what all the whole thing or is everybody okay with it?
I asked the, the chief Burke and he just preferred that the, uh, borough manager give the summary. You can just give the summary, total number of calls.
All right. Total dispatch calls, thirty-three. Ambulance handled, uh, twelve, sixteen. Total six transport, three refusal, one DOA, four cancel, two fire standby. Uh, QRS, twelve handled. Out of them, no crew mutual aid fifteen. Forty-six percent, uh, Eddie Stone ambulance responded, fifty-four percent mutual aid responded. Total alarms, seventeen. Total members responding, eighty-one. Average four point five persons per call.
Counsel, you've heard the fire report for the month of January, two thousand twenty. Can I have a motion?
Send word.
I have a motion from Ms. Gross, seconded, seconded from Mr. Sigga. Members of council, any questions before I call for action? Any comments from the public before I call for action? Not hearing any comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Counsel, at this time will entertain a motion for the passing of resolution two thousand twenty dash oh two, which is the submission of a DCNR small communities grant for improvements at Lighthouse Hall. I have a motion from Ms. Reeves, a second from Mr. Sigga. Counsel, any questions before I call for action? Any mess, any questions or comments from the public? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the letter of support for the submission of the TCDI grant for improvement, an improvement study along the two ninety-one corridor.
Send word. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel, any questions? Public, any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Uh, counsel, at this time will entertain a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash oh three, which is requesting liquid fuel funding. What did I miss? I just did that one.
It's getting late, I know.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions from council? Any questions from the public? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Counsel, at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the application cost, which is five hundred dollars for the submission of the R cap grant for the proposed municipal complex improvements. Motion made from Counselor Sprague, seconded by Ms. Reeves. Any questions prior to the call for action? Any questions from the public? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Ms. Catania, I missed one, I believe, correct?
Yeah, the, the motion for, I guess the next resolution would be twenty twenty dash oh four. It's for the TE one sixty, which is actually the, the resolution application for the, uh, revisions to the traffic signal.
That's the HOP grant that PennDOT requires for the...
Yes.
Actually, that's gonna be zero five, correct? Zero four was the one carder?
I think, uh, I don't think the le, the letter of support for the TCDI is not a resolution. It's just the letter. But I think we are correct with the numbering oh four. I have a motion made and seconded. Counsel, any questions before we call for action? Not hearing any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? No questions or comments from the public? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Any other action items that need to be taken in front of council this evening? Not hearing any. I did receive a request from the mayor and the chief of police that we do have some surplus equipment sitting in the yard that specifically is three police cars that are no longer in service. I believe we also have a fire truck, correct, Mr. Burke?
That's correct.
We are gonna put it on municipid.com, so if, um, if, uh, Mr. Macheski, if you can get me the information, all the police cars and, uh, Chief Burke yourself or designated from the Firehouse can get all of the information together so that we would be able to put an ad on municipid, uh, I will get an ad together and prior to actually letting that go live, I'll get permission from council to not only sell the surplus equipment, but also to establish if there's any reserves to put on the, uh, vehicles. With no other action items this evening, I will gladly request...